Is there a junior county executive here this evening? He could sit down front. He could sit in the front here. Please, tonight. He could come right in here if he wants.
We did, we, you're, gotta stay right there.
You can come in here.
Yeah, you're good.
What's he gonna run around?
He's got shade.
He's gonna sit more, he's gonna sit still more than you do, so don't even worry about it.
That's probably true. But he has, he's good here.
All right. Good evening and welcome to the October 6th Northampton County Council meeting. I'd ask John Gafredo to please do the pledge. I can't even say your name.
Agents to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Embow, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Brown. Mr. Cusick.
Present.
Mr. Giovanni.
Here.
Mr. Gafredo.
Here.
Mr. Heckman. Mr. Lot.
Present.
Mr. Myers.
Present.
Ms. Fargo Hefner.
Here.
Ms. Zirinsky.
Here.
All present except Mr. Heckman.
Okay. I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the minutes of September 15th, 2022.
Motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. I, do I have anybody to sign in for courtesy of the floor? No? Is there anybody here who wishes to speak to courtesy of the floor this evening? Okay. Mr. McClure, do you have a report this evening?
I do. First, I'd like to present a proclamation to one of the leading lights of the Lehigh Valley and someone who has contributed so immensely to Northampton County itself, specifically in Northampton County prison. He has led our implicit bias training in Northampton County prison for many years. And we have, I would say, one of the most progressive D E I programs in a prison in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. It's in many ways due to this gentleman. So, Mr. Lopez, if you could come up here, please? I have numerous whereas clauses which I'll dispense reading for the purposes of saving time, but I would like to, because this is such a big deal. We wanted to, we wanted to publicly honor you. Guillermo Lopez Jr. is a first-generation Puerto Rican, born and raised in Bethlehem, Pennsylvania. Guillermo has been honing his skills as a leader and facilitator in diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging spaces for over 30 years. He has extensive experience working with communities and organizations to build trust, create opportunities for collaboration, and strengthen relationships across differences. Guillermo has trained and consulted with over 20 universities and 31 communities in 14 different states and two different continents, 12 police departments, including law enforcement within Northampton County, and eight school districts. In 2022, the PA Latino Convention established a D E I Institute in Guillermo's name. The Institute is an opportunity for convention attendees to learn about diversity, equity, and inclusion from the lenses of the Latino community. Guillermo has been a remarkable leader championing issues of equity and inclusion, the expansion of resources for the Latino community, and building bridges for respect and prosperity. Now, therefore, do I, Lamont G. McClure, Northampton County Executive, on behalf of the citizens of the county, honor and recognize Guillermo Lopez Jr. for being a passionate advocate for the Latino community for decades. Northampton County, Pennsylvania, October 6th, 2020. Congratulations, my friend. Congratulations. We gotta get our picture taken.
Okay.
We gotta get our picture taken. I'm gonna let you say a few words, too. If you don't mind, Madam President.
Not at all.
Thank you. Wow. It's funny, because things like this make you think about the journey, if you will. And I'd have to say that there is a change, because I'm still the same person, and I'm being embraced where years ago it was like, what are you talking about? So, I think there's progress in that. But I, I think what I want to say is that, as an advocate for the Latino community, is, I'll say it this way. Everything we want is good for everyone else. We're not looking for special, we're looking for sharing, we're looking for equal, we're looking for how it is that we're part of the decision-making in a way that all our children feel the progress like I have felt from my parents, and that my grandchildren get to feel it from me. So I think more than anything is, I want you to think of us as a major solution for the challenges that we see in our society now. It's, as a Latino community, we actually live those challenges, because we live the rainbow. That is, everything within the spectrum of race and color exists in a Latino community. And I'll quote a famous Puerto Rican poet, John Lennon, "All you need is love."
Thank you, my friend. Thank you so much. We're putting Logan to work tonight. So, last night, you heard Mr. Weaver allude to the, with the respect to the transition, thank you, Logan, with respect to the transition with 911 being consolidated into our, into our system with Bethlehem, and how relatively seamless that process was. And I know we've talked about this before, but I again want to credit Mr. Dertinger, Mr. Weaver, for their excellent work in getting that system online, to get that system up and running, and they did wonderful work. And it's been, it's been working fairly well ever since. But what you have before you tonight, when we took that system over, we took Bethlehem's P-25 radio apparatus over as well. And with your $5 million of ARPA funds that you've committed to the purchase of additional P-25 equipment, we can now serve 95% of Northampton County with P-25 equipment. You may recall that when we approached you about the ARPA funding, the $5 million that you granted, we thought maybe we could get, what, 25 to 30%? But, about that?
Forty.
About 40? Okay. So we now know we can cover 95% of Northampton County with the P-25 apparatus and equipment. And this will make, this quite frankly is going to make our citizens that much safer. The 5%, you can see in the white, the 5% that's not covered. You see over in Lehigh Township, you see up in Upper Mount Bethlehem, you see a little in Lower Enron Williams. You can guess that the mountains have an effect on our ability to get that last 5% covered. You can see that on the maps. That last 5% is going to cost $5 million. So, the last 5% is going to be as much as the 50-ish percent extra we got. The good news is, we have applied for a $5 million grant to get that last $5 million so that we can cover the last 5% of the county. So we thought that was good news, and you'd enjoy hearing that tonight. So Ms. Bradley was here last night talking about her budget request, and of course, we have $605,000 in for the Lehigh Valley Planning Commission in our proposed budget. But Mr. Cusick asked, how are we doing in terms of equity with respect to transportation funding? And while we're doing a little bit better, you can see from the numbers that Mr. Emili compiled for me today, Mr. Emili has been working with LVTS and me for five years. He's, he is our resident expert on transportation funding. And as you can see, we're still not there. We're still not being funded equitably when it comes to transportation funding. Now, you know, so the by-county funding benefits, you know, both counties, you know, we gotta get across the bridges. But you can see there's still a lot of work to do when it comes to transportation funding. And this is critically important with someone, I don't know if it was Ms. Fargo Hefner, someone asked about the, the new infrastructure money and how that's going to be distributed. And it's really important that we make sure that they know, at LVTS, that we are not satisfied with the distribution as it is currently reflected on this tip. And we are pressing hard to get more Northampton County priorities. There are three or four priorities that we have, large-dollar item priorities, that are not reflected currently on the tip that we're pushing to get on the tip. So, wish us luck. It is important to continue to have council support as I push forward on it. That's what I have for my report. Is there any questions?
Okay, I'll start with Mr. Lot and work around.
Yeah, Lehigh Valley Transportation, it always seems like the planning commission and that commission gets kind of fudged together. How is their funding, the transportation? They're funding through the state?
Federal highways in PennDOT, I think about $2 million a year. When, there's a couple of different funds, and when they're added up, I think it comes out to about $2 million a year.
But the county doesn't put money toward?
Well, see, that's an interesting question. So, when Ms. Bradley originally wanted to blend the two plans, the, the future LV, the planning plan, and the transportation plan, I was skeptical. Because Ms. Bradley always makes the point, these are two separate entities, and the two shall never meet, and, but recently at an executive board meeting, I was pressing on this whole idea of the conflation of the planning commission responsibilities and the LVTS responsibilities. And I asked, well, how much planning commission staff time is spent on transportation issues? Well, a lot, but how much? You know, tell us that. You know, tell us how much time your planners actually need to do planning functions, as opposed to how much time they spend on transportation issues? Because let's sort of step way, way back on this. We're required to have a planning commission. That's state law. We're required to have one. But does it just the planning functions that we're required to have? All of these other things, we're not required to have. So, when you start talking about $700,000, $900,000, 1.3 million, that's no longer a good deal for Northampton County. We've been investigating what our own planning commission would likely cost us, and it's well less than $900,000 on an annual basis to do the same planning functions that they currently do at LVPC. The transportation issue is a different issue. It's a much thornier issue. Getting out of that would be much harder than it would be to start our own planning commission. And I'm not advocating that, by the way. Because that 575, which was my proposed budgetary number last year, that's a really good deal for us, because we have to have a planning commission. We don't have a choice not to have one. Even at 605, which is in my proposed budget this year, that's still a really good deal for Northampton County in terms of having a planning commission. But when you start to get to 900 million annually, that's not a good deal for Northampton County taxpayers anymore. And I think that Ms. Bradley needs to come to that realization, too. But it's, it's getting hard to get her there.
Did you just say 9 million?
No, 900,000, I meant. If I said 9 million, I misspoke.
You have 900,000, too, am I?
Yes. Well, isn't that part of her plan?
Yes.
Yeah, getting us up to about 1.3 a year or something eventually?
Mr. Lot, did you have more questions?
No, thank you. That was, it kind of explained, because it does, you know, it's, it seems like they're one in the same when you go, when you're there watching and involved in it. You know, but we always get told funding, they're separate, because they're separate. But I kind of wonder how much of our money is being bled over into being used by the Transportation Authority? That was my thought last night, and that's why I asked you the question.
Okay, so the answer to your question is, money is fungible? And Ms. Bradley has acknowledged in the board meetings, and I think Ms. Zirinsky can, can validate this, that, that planning money is sometimes spent on transportation issues, and transportation money is sometimes spent on planning issues. So, but how much? And that's a very, it's like trying to grab smoke.
Thank you.
Mr. Myers?
Part of the question I was gonna ask you, you already answered, because I was, what would it cost us to have our own commission? Because when we're getting close to $775,000, it just threw me back, and when I asked the question, how much of it was salary, she had a dumb look on her face, and I, and I requested, we get that by the next time she shows up. So, it's not a good idea, or is it a good idea that we investigate having our own commission?
Well, so we have begun the, right now, it's not a good idea. At 575 or 605, we're, it's a deal. It's a good bargain for Northampton County's taxpayers. At 775, it starts to become something we really need to consider and investigate.
That's why I was asking the question.
Yeah, their budget, their budget is relatively small. And to have that much of it be personnel, salaries, wages, benefits, a fully-funded pension program, other post-employment benefits, fully funded, being fully funded by our taxpayers. And, and the question we have to ask is, what's the value to our taxpayers? So it was an excellent question to ask.
Ms. Zirinsky?
I had a question about this chart here.
Yes.
So it shows that a significant amount is designated to Lehigh County for the tip, and not as much for Northampton County. I would say almost half to Northampton, like, half as much goes to Northampton County as Lehigh. So, in order to get on the tip, do you not have to apply and like make suggestions? And did we? And what's, why is there, why are there not more Northampton County projects on the tip?
So, the short answer is, this represents an improvement. This, we were in the 30s in percentages, we're now into the 40s. So, and, and this basically comes from jawboning, right?
Comes from what?
From jawboning, from me being here talking about this, that jawboning, you know, talking about it. That's what this comes from. No real process. The process is driven by PennDOT. And when you're talking about the inequities of, and, and I suspect, although I've never been, so I'm, I'm in the chair of the Transportation Committee now, the coordinating committee. So there are two meetings. There's the meeting, the organizational meeting before the actual meeting. I'm not in, I'm the meeting before that meeting. I'm not in the meeting where Becky and PennDOT meet to talk about the projects. I'm not in that meeting, not invited. And I'm sure there is that meeting, right? Or several meetings? Because it's a big, it takes a lot of, type of a lot of work to put these projects together. PennDOT does a great job. I'm not, I'm, I'm not questioning PennDOT's motives. I'm, I'm not, but they do drive, PennDOT drives the ship.
That doesn't make any.
Wait, wait. Ms. Zirinsky, are, were you finished?
No, it didn't make sense to me either, but.
What doesn't?
That PennDOT drives the ship.
Theoretically, the counties and the municipalities theoretically have the vote on LVTS to determine what the projects are. But how does the county executive of Northampton County and, you know, whatever representative comes from the city of Beth, how, how do, how do we substitute our technical judgment for PennDOT's? It becomes a really difficult, so we know we have issues, the city of Bethlehem, Hill to Hill Bridge, or, you know, in Easton, the bridge to Hugh Moore. So, so they can identify local areas of need, but we really don't have the expertise. If PennDOT comes in and says, we can't do this because the, you know, the inverse of the contrapositive will not line up with the stars, you know, it's, you don't do it, right?
Really?
Right? It's very difficult. It's, it's, in my, in my view, it's very difficult for the members of the LVTS to actually drive the process. PennDOT drives the process.
Because this is set from 2023 to 2026.
Yeah. It can be amended, but very difficult.
All right.
You didn't like my math joke? Meant that for you.
Anybody on this side? Mr. Brown?
If I recall, the tip process that you're describing that PennDOT drives, we're competing across the state. So we're competing for that pool amongst all the other 66 counties also, for that funding to even make it into the pool before the, even the projects that are considered on that tip list across the region. Is that?
I think the central office gets a pool of money from the legislature, and then the central office divides that money up amongst its districts. I don't know how many PennDOT districts are, I forget. So that, so we get, they put a number on us, and there's a formula that they use that I don't understand, but it's population-driven.
I have a few questions. Okay, Mr. Gafredo, go ahead.
The only reason why I'm asking is because you just said, I was gonna wonder, how do they derive the funding? And you said it's population-driven.
Well, they have a formula, and, and let me get you a precise answer on. I don't, I don't want to mislead you.
Closer to 85% of what Lehigh County's population is, and yet, we're getting a fraction of that funding.
Okay, so in the LVTS, where it's a metropolitan planning organization, and it really encompasses the two counties. So, that, that's even better from the, the perspective that you're thinking of, it makes our population even larger. Thank you. But let me find out what the exact nature of the, how they determine that, how central office determines which each of the districts get for their tip funding.
So, it states that there's also some by-county projects?
Yes.
What are some examples of those, please?
The cement and bridge, you know.
That goes between?
Yes. Bridges, I think, are the main, that, the main, of course, well, bridges are very expensive.
Right.
And ones that, you know, are expanses over rivers are even more expensive, so, and there's been a lot of bridgework done in the Lehigh Valley in the last 20 years. So that, that's mostly what that is, bridgework.
And then the transit costs?
That's slanta mostly.
So, in addition to the money that we give them, that's what they give them, or?
Yes. Our, our money to slanta is actually, it's quite insignificant compared to their overall budget.
So I guess, again, my question, well, to, is there a time that we can hear from Mr. Emili what some of these Northampton County projects are?
Yes.
I mean, probably during capital projects would be the best.
Yes. He'd be, he'd be happy to do that.
Just to kind of hear what direction they're allowing us to go, which is what it sounds like it is. I still guess I don't. I don't even know how to ask the question. I don't understand. I worry that if we don't, I feel hostage. How about I start there? I feel like if I don't grant her request, is that gonna inversely, adversely affect our ability to get infrastructure funding for this county?
No.
Because is it all going there?
No.
What's the process of?
No.
Because, because she couldn't quite articulate that.
Yeah, well, I can, no. The answer's no.
All right. So we could stick to our budget needs and not shoot ourselves?
Yes.
Any other questions on this, or anything else? Are you gonna introduce the gentleman who's been assisting you this evening?
Oh, our deputy county executive here, Mr. Logan?
Would you like to speak to council and introduce yourself?
I think he's done enough work.
I think not. Well, thank you for being here this evening and for helping us.
Thanks, buddy. That concludes my report, if you don't.
I wish his mother could have seen that face. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have old business. Consideration of a resolution overriding county executive's veto of ordinance entitled "An Ordinance Providing For Compensation of Elected Officials in the County of Northampton County Executive." This ordinance was introduced by Mr.'s Myers and Cusick on September 1st, was adopted by county council at the meeting held on September 15th by a vote of 8 to 0. The ordinance was presented to the county executive on September 16th, 2022, which he vetoed and returned to county council on September 20th. A resolution providing for an override of the veto was prepared, and a vote in favor of the resolution was a vote to override the veto. Will Mr. Cusick please introduce this resolution?
Sure. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Northampton County Council that the county executive's veto of the ordinance titled "An Ordinance Providing for Compensation of Elected Officials in the County of Northampton County Executive" shall be overridden this 6th day of October 2022.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on this matter? Mr. Lot?
Yeah, I'd like to keep it real quick. I wasn't here last, last meeting, so, of course, I, I supported the raise for the county exec, or I did not, no, I did support it, because, you know, I felt that he is underpaid. But the problem I'm having now is, now that it looks like we're gonna do a wage study, I have a real hard time, I'm gonna support his, his override, because we're gonna spend money to do a study, most likely, a wage study. And I think it's, it's, I think it's, the optics are horrible, in my opinion, that we're gonna spend money, if we do this, to do a wage study. But we gave council a raise, we gave our controller a raise, and now we're gonna give our county exec a raise, and then we're gonna, and we gave some of our staff a raise. These are all elected people. I think that, I think if you were gonna do a study, why would we not put these positions in that study? The, the, these raises have not been given out, I mean, council hasn't gotten a raise in forever. So, what would, what would it have mattered to wait a little bit if we're gonna do a wage study anyway, to throw it in there? What would it matter if we waited and, for the executive to see what the wage study says? You know, we, in my, I have yet to hear how we polled this number for his, his wages out. Do we compare it with other county execs? I mean, so, we're gonna spend taxpayers' money on a wage study, and I'm trying to justify supporting the override for the wage study, but here's a good example where we could have actually used the wage study, and we chose to approve these, these raises before. I, I, to me, it doesn't make much sense. So that's the first reason I'm gonna support the override, because this should have been thrown in. If we're gonna do a wage study, we should not have given ourselves raises, we should not be giving other elected official raises. If we're gonna spend this money on a wage study, that should have been afterward. The second reason I'm gonna do it is because I've never in my life heard somebody say, don't give me a raise, don't give my position a raise. I've never heard that, so I just, okay. I just feel, if, if he's the man that's in that position, and he's saying, don't give this position a raise, I, for some reason, that holds a lot of water for me. I, I don't know, I've never heard that before, but, but that does. But mostly, I'm really, mostly supporting his veto, because I just think, if we're gonna spend this taxpayer money on a wage study, why in God's name wouldn't we include ours, his, and the controllers? And, you know, but we, we exclude ourself, give ourself a raise, and then we're gonna do a study. So that's, I just want to explain, because I am, I do believe a raise is, is needed for the executive position. You know, compare him to private sector, it's crazy, but I think private sector CEOs make way too much money either, so that's not really a good comparison either. But anyway, that is why I'm gonna be supporting his veto, though I did originally support the raise, but that's what changed my position. Thank you.
Ms. Zirinsky?
I believe when we first voted on this last January, that I did not support the raise. I felt that the amount was arbitrary. It started off at 100,000, then it was 120,000. Now we're voting on 150, 105,000, and I feel like it does need some sort of formal study to really come up with the amount that it should be. And I don't feel comfortable voting to override this veto, so I'm gonna be voting no.
Mr. Gafredo?
To push back a little bit on Mr. Lot's concerns as far as what justifies these wages, you know, when we do a wage study, there's over 1,000 people that work for the county with jobs and descriptions of jobs that I don't have the slightest clue of what they do, or how they do it, or what competitive rates are. When we're looking at the executive, we are familiar with his job duties, we're familiar with other people that work underneath him getting paid more than him, and we're also familiar with the benefits in the, you know, the... And we're also familiar with the benefits in the, you know, the, the status that comes with that position. I don't think a hundred and five thousand dollars is a, a wage that describes the work that he does, because I think his job is, it's very challenging. But I do think it is a position that, that receives a lot of other areas of satisfaction or compensation. And I do think, as people in our positions, we are put here to make decisions. One that I feel like we can make is what the person that we deal with on a weekly basis or a monthly basis, what he deserves. And honestly, I think the wage study, which he also vetoed, so we could be not having a wage study as well, but that wage study is not for his position, it's for the people that are working in this county. So I feel very confident that a hundred and five thousand dollars is an adequate increase of a position that is deserving of that amount of money. I believe our president compared that with other Class III counties, and it fell right about in the middle. And I think that is justification enough to support the salary. And I think it is our job, it is our position to make judgment calls at times, and I think it's one of those judgment calls that we should be making.
Anyone else? Mr. Lot?
I appreciate that, Mr. Gafredo, but then if you take that to the next step, to the next pay study, we work directly with him, so we determine his wages, is what you're saying. We understand his job. So, if you put that in the context of the administration and the directors and the unions understand their jobs and do understand, and it's their decision to make those wages, and why are we spending taxpayers' money to do the job they were elected to? I think that falls along the line that you just described. It's our job to make his wages. It's his job, and then an administrative's job, to negotiate with the union to, to do their job to make the wages. So I, I hear that argument, but I think you could use that same argument against the wage study.
Me and Mr. Lot are familiar with each other in a previous life, that him being a union BA and me being a non-union business owner. So forgive me for not having the same level of admiration, I guess, for the positions that those, you know, it's a tough job, but we've had many employees coming in here. And I've only been here for nine months, and all I've been hearing left and right is people are leaving. So that's why we're, and that's a separate topic, obviously. It's the next thing we're about to talk about. But we're doing a wage study, because we have gone through a very tumultuous couple of years with inflation not being able to be kept up with wages. And we've gone through so many positions that haven't gotten raises or increases in steps for, you know, years and years and years. So it's like, maybe this is the perfect timing, and that's the next conversation. But I do want to differentiate the two. I want to be able to say that the executive is a, it's a, it's a special position. It's a unique position. It's not like all the other positions, and it's not represented by the union. So I do think, in this case, that it is up for our judgment.
Mr. Meyer?
Thank you, Madam President. Couple things I, I noted in the executive's veto. He cited the Lehigh County executive's salary. And I just wanted to note that the, the Lehigh County executive's salary is supplemented by his lucrative teaching pension. And, but aside, all joking aside, you know, not everyone who is in that position, it comes from the, the financial means that, that maybe Mr. McClure or other executives have. Every person who takes that job may have a different fiscal circumstance. And what I want to do is I want to make sure that the, the salary does not deter people who may be interested from running. Not everyone has a pension to add to, to their salary. Not everyone has maybe a high-earning spouse, or savings, or money from a previous occupation. And, and then finally, I think the third thing he mentioned in his veto was, well, should the salary that's currently eighty-five thousand reflect the responsibility of almost two thousand employees, a five-hundred-and-forty-million-dollar budget? And the fact that the position, the salary has remained the same for sixteen years, I think that warrants raising it. And I think one oh five is certainly reasonable when state representatives are poised to make very close to that next year. So that's where I stand. Thank you.
Mr. Meyer?
First of all, everything that's being voted on tonight will not go into effect until the next election. So we are not voting on his specifically position or his need. It's the next person that's coming in the door. He needs to be taken out of the equation, and the position is the part that we are voting on. It's nothing personal. I'm looking at it from the standpoint, it's the executive position that we're increasing the salary for. We're not increasing it for the person who's in it now, or whatever council person runs, or whatever controller. It's for the next election. That's why I voted for it, because I think it's the position. It's not the person. And that's where we need to look at it. And you can zip it up, look it down, and say, "Hey, he doesn't want it." Well, it doesn't really give a damn if he doesn't want it. He may not be the executive the next time that somebody comes up. We're voting on the position, we're not voting on the person. And from the standpoint of what Mr. Cusack said is correct. The person who may be coming here may not be in the position to say, "Okay, I can live with eighty-five thousand." It's not about that, it's about the position. Take the people out of the damn equation and deal with the fact that it is the position. And that's why I would be voting for it, because I think it's the position. Get us out of it, and look at what happens with the next election, that's all.
Mr. Zirinsky?
I just want to comment on what he said. So I think Mr. Meyer makes a great point. This is not about Mr. McClure. This also is something that's not going to take into effect till the next election. So I don't understand why we need to rush into this. I think that in four years, that need is probably gonna change again. And that a hundred and five thousand dollars, four years from now, with the rate of inflation, may not be what is commanded. We don't know what's going to happen to the economy. And I think that we need a more substantive study to go along with what the salary should actually be, if we intend to raise it. And I know that people keep citing that there was a study, but I don't believe that the study in Ms. Vargo Hefner's notebook that I did not see is a substantive study. And so I would rather see something more formal, put together, that shows what a county executive of this size county should, with, not Mr. McClure's job responsibilities, but a county executive's job responsibilities should entail. And I don't think that we have to rush into this, because we do have at least three more years. Thank you.
Mr. Lot?
Yes, I just want to be perfectly clear. I believe the county exec is deserving of more money for that position. My argument, and why I'm gonna support the veto, is this does, this raise is not for the current county exec. It is for the next county exec. So if it's for the next county exec, and we're spending taxpayers' money on, and I believe it's gonna pass, on a wage study, why wouldn't, we don't need to do this tonight? In fact, the later we do it, the better grasp we'll have on toward the end of this term. You know, when this study, that I believe is gonna be passed tonight, wage study, gets done, it'll be out a little bit further. So we'll even have a better understanding of what that wage should be. We'll have an outside person come in and tell us, "This is what, you know, we gathered. This is what..." So my argument isn't that he didn't, shouldn't be paid more. My argument is, let's use our taxpayers' money wisely. If we're gonna spend on a hundred, or I don't know what this study is gonna cost, but it costs a hundred thousand dollars, maybe more. May, maybe we should wait and see what that study tells us. I mean, we're gonna spend this kind of taxpayers' money. So I don't want to be, I want to be perfectly clear. I supported the raise for him in the beginning. But that was before we were talking about a wage study. I'm trying to justify this wage study. I'm having a hard time justifying the wage study when we're excluding elected officials out of it, council out of it. Now, what are we down to? The union and the career service people. The union does wage studies every time they do a contract. So, I, you know, who's this wage study for? I know I'm going to the next one, but it ties in with this one, because I am not gonna support this, because we're gonna, we're gonna pass a wage study. But we're gonna exclude all these people out of it. I, 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 I just, I feel like I'm being misquoted. I'm not saying he doesn't deserve more money. I'm saying, wait, you guys are gonna spend a lot of money on this wage study. Why not throw it in? So I want to be real clear. That's where I'm at.
I just want to say that this is not being rushed. This started last year as part of the budget amendment process. It's taken us this long. It's October sixth. I did do the work last year. Whether you want to believe it's legitimate or fair, I'm beyond that, because you had ten months to question it, you could have questioned it a year ago. Aileen has the report, she could provide it for anybody. And I did do due diligence. So the fact that you don't want to believe that I did it, but I mean, plenty of other council members do due diligence, and we respect their work. So, so be it. It is arbitrary, because I recommended a hundred and twenty thousand. Council does not want to support that. So I did defer to my colleagues, and it's at a hundred and five. It needs to be done in a timely way. It is for the future. And it was not necessarily going to be included in the wage study, which we will address next, because the wage study is for career services and other positions. So we do have the right to set salaries as council. I heard council last year, when I was president last year, this is one of the things that council wanted to address. We addressed it, and we've been rolling this ball down the hill to October. So we are here tonight. So, you know, if there's no other comments or questions, I'm going to call for the vote. I would like to indicate that a yes vote means we vote to override, and that a no vote means we vote to sustain the veto.
Mr. Cusick?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Gafredo?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
No.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky?
No.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
The veto is overridden by a vote of six to zero, I mean, six to two. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Next, we have the consideration of a resolution overriding the county executive's veto of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Issuing a Request for Proposals Seeking Bidders to Conduct a Wage and Benefit Analysis for Northampton County." This ordinance was introduced by Mr. Gafredo and Giovanni on September first, twenty twenty-second, was adopted by county council at the meeting held September fifteenth, twenty twenty-two by a vote of eight to zero. The ordinance was presented to county exec on September sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, which he vetoed and returned to county council on September twenty-first, twenty twenty-two. A resolution providing for an override of the veto is prepared, and a vote in favor of the resolution is a vote to override the veto. Would Mr. Gafredo please introduce this resolution?
Now therefore be resolved by the Northampton County Council that the county executive's veto of the ordinance titled, "An Ordinance Issuing a Request for Proposals Seeking Bidders to Conduct a Wage and Benefit Analysis for Northampton County", shall be overridden this sixth day of October, two thousand twenty-two.
Are there any discussions regarding this matter? Mr. Lot?
Yes, again, I, I just want to, I was hoping Ron would be here too, but if Mr. Cusick would be so kind, if not, that's fine. These guys have had most seniority on this council. Was a wage, how long ago was the last wage study done? And?
It was done during John Stofa's administration, so I'm gonna say two thousand eight, maybe? Linda, you were around. Two thousand seven, two thousand seven, two thousand, yeah.
Quite, quite some time ago. What was the results of that study?
Well, the result was that we were presented with a list. It was, it was strictly career service, but what we were presented with was a list of salaries, and it indicated ones that were perhaps too low and ones that were perhaps too high. Council looked at it, the executive reviewed it, and at that time, no action was taken, and we just moved forward.
Thank you, Mr. Cusick. You wouldn't recall about how much that cost back then. I guess that doesn't matter. And, and that's my concern, you know, quite frankly. We spend taxpayers' money, and it costs a lot to do these studies. These people don't come cheap. And we end up shelving it. I'm trying to figure, I want to support the pay study, because I, like you have heard, you know, grumbling. But it's interesting, I mean, if people are gonna come in and it's high, are we gonna reduce their rates, or are we only gonna lift the guys up? But my real concern of it, 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 it's gonna be very difficult to use, because we do wage studies every time we negotiate with unions. The administrat, I mean, the union does a study, I was there. We do studies, we bring all our paperwork and our studies and our data. They, the administration will bring their, their, in my case, contractors, or the ABC will bring their, and, and, and you do your battle, and you're, you can always get surveys to say what you want to, or, 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 or studies, too. We, I used to, you know, we'd battle the ABC, the non-union representing. They have their study, says exactly what they want. We have, our study says what we want. So I'm not a big fan of studies, because half the money you spend on a study, that group has to learn about your organization. So you're basically spending a lot of money teaching somebody about your organization, so they can tell you what they think you're doing wrong or not doing right. But anyway, so this wage study, you know, it, the only people it could really affect, you know, that directly, I, I don't see how it can directly affect any of our employees. The, 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 the non-union employees, the career service employees, what can they do with it? Okay? So they can look at it and say, "I'm underpaid." They still have to negotiate, the, 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 the executive still makes that final decision. The unions, and quite frankly, I'm gonna take my taxpayers' hat off, and I'm gonna put my union hat on. I'm gonna support this pay raise, because the only thing I can think this thing's gonna help is the unions. It's gonna be bad for the taxpayers, but it will help the unions come negotiating time. You know, because now it's not only their literature, it's gonna be our literature, too. So I've been fighting half my life for better wages for people. So as much as I think it's not a wise way to spend our taxpayers' money, I'm gonna support the override, because it's gonna be, I'm a union guy, and this is good for the union. This is gonna help the union negotiate against our county. Probably not so good for our taxpayers, but, you know, like I said, I'm being very honest on. You know, the only reason I'm supporting is, I, I can't find a lot of good reasons. I don't see how it's gonna help our non-union employees, especially when the administration is not asking for it. They're the ones that are gonna need to use this to propose back to us. So I'm gonna support it, but I, I, I feel very, I have, I don't feel real good about the taxpayer money end of it. Thank you.
I'd like to just make a point of clarification before we continue the discussion. This ordinance was to issue a request for proposals. It does not expend any money. The, we, you know, again, the history of this and where we are today is that we did a budget amendment last year to put money aside to be able to do the study. Then we need, we did a resolution so that we could do a request for proposal. That was met with some resistance, and we, we need to do a request for proposals to even see what we can expend. We don't even know what we're gonna be charging. We, we haven't been able to get the right language to ask for somebody to come in and tell them what we want them to do. So we haven't made a commitment to spend the money until we do the RFP. And so this is only about taking that next step and getting the administration to agree to take that next step on our behalf, because at this time, it's at an impasse. And so, you know, with all due respect, when we get to the RFP, when we get the bids back, we will have a committee that reviews them and brings them to council, and we will review all the bids and see if we get what we want. But we can't even get there yet. So no one's looking to just blow money on some high-flutant consultant to, to make nothing happen. I think it's just a matter of trying to get it out there to see what we can get done. So, thank you. Mr. Cusick?
Yeah.
And then Mr. Meyer?
Yeah, real quick, just to follow up. The reason why this was put in the career service regulations originally was to make sure we could compete with, like Bethlehem Steel for, for employees. And I think now we're competing with warehouses, fast food restaurants, you name it. Mr. Heckman is fond of saying, "Well, we offer a pension." Mr. Heckman is fond of saying, well, we offer a pension, but you know, a pension's great when, when you retire, but it doesn't pay your, your rent and your grocery bills right now. So I think it's important that we do this for a couple of reasons. What happens is when you get the study back, it will make some suggestions. Now, what's gonna happen when we get to budget time is we've been presented with a 3% raise from, for the career service employees. Well, this, it may, the, the survey may come back and say, well, that's too little or that's too much. So that's one thing. And the other piece that it does is that for, for some reason, we also see employees that somehow get singled out for steps and raises that, that may be getting ahead of their skis. And what, what's done in that case is that their wages can be frozen and that is a possibility. Now, that was something that was looked at last time that council and the previous executive did not have the stomach to do. Because a couple of the employees that were circled or, and/or potentially frozen were very sensitive ones that, that, you know, we felt otherwise because of the value that they provided the county. But I think it's important that we do this. I mean, for the last two years, all we've heard from department heads is we don't have enough people, we're not able to hire. So I think we need to look at that. Are we offering enough in, in wages? Benefits were over and beyond, but I think when we look at the, the younger workers coming in today, you know, they want to be able to pay their rent, they want to be able to pay their grocery bill and their pension, their health insurance. That, that's great long-term, but I, I, I think we really have to look at it, especially when we're talking about these entry level positions. And wait, didn't we just see the, the 911 with vacancies? So it's everywhere and I think this is time to look at it.
Mr. Myers?
I'm going to echo some of what Mr. Cusick said because of the simple fact, over the last year, every time we've had a meeting, we've heard nothing but vacancies. 32 at the Juvenile Justice Center, 10 at 911, 30 plus at DHS. Right there's almost 100 bodies and we haven't hit the rest of the world. And when, if you mention the fact that maybe we're underpaid, sometimes you get blowback from people in the position of authority here that you don't know what the hell you're talking about. Well, people are leaving this county when we were the gold standard and we gotta find out why they're leaving our county and we need to get back to being the gold standard that we are supposed to be. This wage study may help us evaluate and see where we're coming from. You know, everything ain't so rosy when people are vacating and we gotta stop the bleeding. We gotta find out why. And if the wage study can at least give us some guidance that maybe we're not competitive enough, then we need to know that. That's the reason why I'm all for trying to do it, but this is all, like Lori said, this is the first step. We, you know, before we put it out there, we're all gonna have a hand on exactly what we want this thing to say. So I'm supporting it because of the simple fact that we need to see why we're losing so many people. That's my biggest fear. You know, when, I can remember growing up and seeing folks come here and, and working for Northern Cali and being proud of it. Now you hear people saying, I can't stand anymore because I, you know, I gotta go get food stamps to feed my family. That's an embarrassment. So that's the reason why I'm voting for it.
Any other discussion?
I just want to say, I've commented on this before and this is just a, a request to get an RFPs, you know, just a request for bids. I think it's important that we at least give this a shot and look at and see what bidders come and what they can offer and then decide what it is that we're gonna vote on. And I see the value in that because I think that our employees deserve a fair wage and I've always thought that fair wages are important. I think that the unions apparently will benefit from this, so how can you go wrong, right? And I think we do have some sort of responsibility to our employees here at Northampton County to make sure that they have adequate income and not just to meet the bare minimum, just to pay their rent and to get some food, because we really want people to thrive here and I think we use that word a lot, thrive. And, you know, when you're just surviving, that's one thing and I think we do want people to thrive here, so I'm gonna vote yes.
Damn, Tara, we agree.
I know, it's amazing. You know what? I, I agree with you sometimes, sometimes I don't. I have my opinions. I'm an independent woman. Call for the vote.
Mr. Gofredo?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Ms. Sarinski?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Cusick?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Veto is overridden by a vote of eight to zero.
Nine to zero.
Nine to zero.
There's only eight of us here today. Eight. Oh, eight. Can't count Ron. No, no, eight to zero. I, I had eight to zero and then I thought it was nine. It's all right.
I know. Consideration next of a resolution overriding county executive's veto of an ordinance entitled "An Ordinance Issuing a Request for Proposals Seeking Bidders to Conduct a Comprehensive Operational Study of Greystale Nursing Home." This ordinance was introduced by Mr. Myers and Cusick on September 1st, 2022, adopted by county council at the meeting on September 15th, 2022, by a vote of eight to zero. Ordinance was presented to county executive on September 16th, 2022, which he vetoed and returned to the county council on September 22, 2022. Resolution providing for an override of the veto was prepared and a vote in favor of the resolution was a vote, is a vote to override the veto. Will someone, oh, Mr. Myers, will you introduce this, please?
I sure will. Now therefore be resolved by the county, Northampton County Council that the county exec veto of the ordinance titled "An Ordinance Issuing a Request for Proposal Seeking Bidders to Conduct a Comprehensive Operational Study of Greystale Nursing Home" shall be overridden on the sixth day of October 2022.
Thank you. Discussion of this matter.
Of course.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're on.
We know you weren't here last time, so go ahead.
I don't believe doing a study on Greystale at this time is, is, is good for taxpayers. I mean, these studies are expensive and if it's not gonna be used and it doesn't benefit employees or doesn't make us a better Greystale, I don't know why we would spend that money. I don't know how you would do a study on Greystale right now because we have just went through a pandemic. We have made so many changes. We have thrown so much capital on it. We have made so many new ideas. They're constantly bringing stuff to us that they want, new ideas, how we can recruit more. It's almost monthly that Greystale comes to us with a new plan, a new idea, a, a new... And, and as far as a study, we do a study monthly. I, I've been sitting here for four years now. It almost is monthly. Their director, their, their director comes, tells us what they're doing. We go back and forth. There's been no subject more than Greystale. We have studied Greystale here for four years. We are making moves. We, if we do a study now, we aren't even giving these moves that we've made and this capital that we put in. We aren't even giving it a chance to work. We're gonna study before we even get going. And my final thought on this is, to me, it's a vote of no confidence to this administration, to Ms. King, to the directors. That's their jobs. Like Mr. Gofredo said, we have jobs, they have jobs. The, the administration was elected again. One of the biggest issues was Greystale. Apparently, he's doing pretty good at Greystale because he won pretty strong election. It was a big subject. I, it's, it's a disservice to the, our directors and to Ms. King. It's, it's a vote of no confidence. These people have been coming here with ideas. They're doing a daycare. So we're gonna spend 100 to $200,000 on a study. We could take that and we could give it to employees that are underpaid. We could add on to our daycare with that money and, and, and allow more of our employees to get it, but we're gonna spend it on an outside source doing a study that's gonna end up getting mothballs on it. I cannot support this. We should be looking to work with this administration and work with Ms. King. I mean, and, and we have been. I mean, we made a lot of changes. Let them play out. What's the rush? Because we put money in a budget a year ago to do studies, now we gotta do them? No! Let's look at what's going on. Let's, let's take that 200,000 or 100,000 or whatever it ends up being and reinvest it in, because I want Greystale to be successful and I want employees at Greystale to be happy. And spending hundreds of thousands of dollars or 200 or 300,000 dollars on a study instead of reinvesting it into that Greystale, it, it's ludicrous in my opinion. Thank you.
Mr. Gofredo?
I think you bring up a lot of good points, Mr. Lot, but the way I, my perspective is, you know, it's like a car that's blowing oil and you just keep pouring oil, oil in it. You know, it could feel like we're taking this 15 million dollars, whatever we've injected into Greystale and say, hey, well, here's this other 200,000 dollars, just keep... Well, if we're running inefficiently, improperly, and somebody could come in here and tell us that from a, from a new perspective, I think that'd be extremely valuable, especially before we spend all that money. Because as we sit here, you know, we all were elected here to make decisions, I'll be the first one to say it. I don't know anything about running a nursing home. So yeah, I listen to Mrs. King come up here and tell me things that, you know, I understand as much as I can and I try to get by, but it's not my area of expertise. And sure, I think she's doing a great job and I think this administration's doing a good job, but it doesn't change the fact that Greystale is in a challenging position to begin with. It's a county-run nursing home. It's a tough thing to do. And then we had a pandemic and now we're at half census. So yeah, you're right, things are changing there and I think we need as much information as we can possibly get to make the best decisions going forward because we're not done there. It's not fixed. It, if it's getting better month to month, it, it is very slowly and I think there's a lot of things that need to happen from now and, you know, for the next couple of years that this study can help us steer in the better direction or in a, in a completely different direction that nobody saw. But at least if we spend a couple hundred thousand dollars on top of the 15 million, I don't think that's money wasted. I think it would be, you know, money well spent for at least me because I don't know how to run a nursing home and they could give me insight that could be very valuable.
Mr. Lot?
I, I appreciate that, but, but they do know how to run a nursing home and, and they are poor, paid to run a, a nursing home. So that is their expertise. So we're gonna spend money to bring in other people in and like I said, studies, you're gonna spend those people, first, you gotta believe these people doing this study actually have to understand Greystale and have to understand, you know, and so you're gonna pay them to learn that. I just, you would be right and the reason I opened up my, my statement as at this time because if Greystale's numbers were going the wrong way, if we were stuck in the mud and we weren't trying new, what I think we all approved, what we all thought were good ideas, if we weren't doing anything different, if we were so to speak, stuck in the mud, if our numbers were going the wrong direction, yeah, we better do a study and look, get somebody else's eyes on this thing, but that's not what's been going on. We got through a pandemic. My, we did really well at that nursing home in a pandemic because my father-in-law was in a nursing home and believe me, they had no negative air. They weren't doing any of the things. I wish my father-in-law, he'd probably still be alive, maybe he'd be alive yet if he was in Greystale because the nursing home he was in didn't do any of the thing. So my point is, a lot is happening. Let's, let's, let's give them the benefit of the doubt. Let's give Ms. King and the administration the benefit of the doubt. If things don't work out in a year or two, if the numbers, or even half a year, if numbers start going down, that would be the time, but we spent a lot of money and we're making a lot of changes and now we're saying, hey, forget all that, let's, let's bring somebody else in it and, and, and see if they got a different route. And if somebody comes in with a different route, we're gonna be, they're gonna, you're gonna be spending more money with their ideas too. I, I, I just, I, I think it's a waste of taxpayers' money. I think it's what they were elected to do, it's their job, their directors, they were re-elected and you know that was a big point, Greystale was a big point on that election. So let's let them do their job. Let's, let's give Ms. King the ability. If they're not doing their job, if they start failing, if the, if the home starts heading the wrong direction, absolutely a study would be appropriate. Bring somebody in from the outside because we're not getting it done. But I'm not ready to say at this point, we're not getting it done. In fact, I think we are getting it done. I, I really do. So I don't see we wasting a couple hundred thousand dollars to, to, to say, yeah, you're doing a good job or maybe you tweaked this or tweaked that. I, I just don't see that's good money. I, I see that money should go into that daycare. I mean, there's a lot of employees that are hearing about this daycare that would like, that aren't up at Greystale that say, why can't we have something like it? So if you're gonna spend money and you want to help the employees, spend money helping the employees. Thank you.
I see value in both of your statements. I think that it's important that we recognize that this is only an RFP and that we're not actually voting on a study tonight again. But at this time, I think that we've seen a Greystale that's trying to recover and I do think that this kind of study would interrupt that recovery. I think we should allow them to recover and give them the space because we do see changes there and we do see movement towards progress. I think, I know that our census is low, but I think that we have intentionally made that census low so that we could handle the staff at, ratio better. I see that Ms. Stuart King comes in here with ideas and concepts to retain employees, to get new employees and that they are trying very hard and I don't think there's anything a consultant's gonna tell us that would be different than what they're doing. I think that we have to ride this out for a little bit and see how Greystale makes it through this recovery period. I see no reason to rush into an RFP to get a study to determine that, so I'll be voting no.
Mr. Myers?
I find this to be extremely interesting that, and I'm gonna ask, solicit, it's our job to, to check on things. It's part of our job to make sure things are smooth. Am I correct with that? That's part of, that's part of council's job?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Because the only thing I'm hearing is that they're doing this and they're doing that. What the hell are we doing? Well, I'm not gonna sit here and be a puppet. Our job is to make sure we're a smooth-running organization and everything is not peachy cream and rosy. We, you know, a part of our jobs is to make sure things are, you know, if things are good and they can get better, more power to them. But just because we're told that things are good, doesn't mean that it's good. I mean, you can look at a filet mignon and if it wasn't cooked good, it's a piece of So let's not just, this is a proposal. We're not actually doing anything but putting proposals out to go see. By the time this gets back to us, things may not be so rosy, but it is part of our job. We're a check and balance. We're two different organizations. We're not here to just simply shake our head and, and everything that comes to us, we say yes to. I'm not about that and I'm not going to be about that. And the reason why I think it's important is because, look, they've come through the war of the pandemic and I applaud the hell out of them for the job they did, but if we can make things better for them, I've got no problem with doing it. That's all I gotta say.
And I, I would just add a couple things to that. One of the things that I, I wanna know, given the timeframe, we're looking at probably getting the results later next year. And given that we've just poured 15 million dollars, I think it would be a, a good opportunity to take a, a step back and ask ourselves, is it working? Okay? Is that 15 dollar, 15 million dollars that we spent working towards what we wanted to? So that's part of it. The other big question for me has been the census. Are we ever going to have 688 residents there again, four to a room? I don't think so. And my hope is that some of that will be addressed in the study. What is the appropriate census? And if the appropriate census is smaller, what steps should we take to, to make changes? So that's what I'm looking to see and get out of this and I, I'm hopeful that those answers will be forthcoming.
The only thing that I would like to add is that I think the assumption that we're looking for
looking for problems or that we're looking to dissect or find negative is a faulty assumption, that an independent operational study may come back with the results that we are in good shape, that we're doing exactly what we need to do, and here's some options to consider for the future. So, you know, I don't think anybody up here is looking at that organization to fail, or we wouldn't have voted to give $15 million to keep improving it. And I don't think anyone here disrespects anyone that comes to present to us from that organization. I think if anything, in the time I've been here, I voted yes to everything to support it. And so I just think sometimes it's good to get an outside lens. I know that the kind of entities that are already doing studies there have also done work in hospitals, and they're looking to find ways to justify costs or maybe, they do come from a, here's what's wrong and here's what you need to do differently next time lens. And I don't think we have to hire somebody to do this study that necessarily has that approach. So I think that we're looking for something completely objective. So that's why, again, you stated it, it is just an RFP. It is not the expending of money at this time, and so I'm going to be voting yes. Any other comments? Call for vote. And reminder that yes is to override and no is to sustain.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Lot.
No.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner.
Yes.
Ms. Serinski.
No.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo.
Yes.
The veto is overridden by a vote of six to two.
Thank you. Is there any other old business that we need to discuss this evening? Then we'll move into new business, consideration of authorization of the redevelopment assistance capital program application and business plan for funding on behalf of Historic Bethlehem Partnership Incorporated resolution. Mr. Lot, will you please introduce?
Whereas the Office of Budget notified Northampton County that the Governor of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania has authorized the release of $753,397 in RACP grant funds for the 1782 and 834 Griss Mill House project located in the city of Bethlehem, Northampton County, Pennsylvania, and has requested the county to prepare and submit a formal and complete RCAP grant and business plan to the Office of the Budget. And whereas the project is eligible to receive funding via the legislative authority in the Capital Budget Project Itemization Act of 2013/085. And whereas the project involves structural repairs, exterior restoration, preservation work to the Griss Millers House, a historic home individually listed on the National Register of Historical Places in 1973, located at 459 Old York Road, Bethlehem, Northampton County, and will benefit the city, the county, and the region, and therefore the county supports the project. And whereas the county has agreed to act as the public applicant on behalf of the Historic Bethlehem Partnership, HBP, as part of the grant approval process and administration. And whereas upon award of the grant fund in the amount of $753,397 to the county for the project and execution of the grant agreement, the county shall enter into a cooperation sub-grant agreement with HBP and disburse such grants, funds to HBP pursuant thereto. And whereas the RCAP grant, if and when issued, shall not be deemed an obligation of the county or of any political subdivision thereof to provide any funds to the HBP for the project. The sole obligation of the county being the dispersal of funds from the RCAP grant to the HBP pursuant to the grant agreement and sub-grant agreement. Now therefore be resolved by the Northampton County Council as follows. One, the county supports the grant to HBP in the amount of $753,397 to be used for the project. The county, two, the county agrees to serve as public applicant for the grant. Three, the county authorizes the county executive to execute the grant agreement on behalf of the HBP and to execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate receipts of the grant for the project. So introduced.
All right. This was discussed at the meeting prior.
That's a committee meeting earlier today.
Is there any further discussion on this matter?
This is already a historical building, right? And we're just making sure we're keeping it up to date. Okay.
You had a thing on here. Did you get this? I think you did. I put it on your desk. It's under there. It shows you the whole presentation.
Sorry, that's from when the power went off last night, and I wanted to wake up. I obviously messed up.
Yep.
Call for the vote? Oh, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to say that and clarify that we are not funding this. We're just sponsoring it in front of the state. So there's no money out from the county.
Anything else? Call for the vote.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yep.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner.
Yes.
Ms. Serinski.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo.
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have consideration approving application for and acceptance of funds through the local share account, Northampton and Lehigh Counties Grant Program Resolution. Mr. Lot, you're up again.
Sure. Whereas the Pennsylvania Racehorse Development and Gaming Act, Act 2004/71, as amended, has established a Pennsylvania Gaming Local Share Account, LSA, under the Commonwealth Financing Authority, CFA, for the purpose of distributing 2% of gross terminal revenues of certain licensed gaming facilities in an orderly and timely fashion to support and enhance community and economic well-being and mitigate the impact of gaming and related activities. And whereas the Northampton County Department of Community and Economic Development has prepared all the documents necessary to submit a request for this funding. Now therefore be resolved, the county of Northampton hereby approves submitting a request for Northampton and Lehigh Counties LSA program grant in the amount of $300,000 from the Commonwealth Financing Authority to be used for the Glendon Hotel site affordable housing project, which will provide for the new construction of five attached townhouses, each consisting of three bedrooms, two bathrooms, and a hat bath at 124 to 126 Main Street, Glendon, Pennsylvania 18042, reserved for home buyers whose income are at or below 80% of the area median income. Be it further resolved that the council of the Northampton County does hereby designate the county executive to execute all documents in agreement between the county of Northampton and the CFA to facilitate and assist with obtaining the requested grant. So introduced.
Thank you. This was also discussed at your meeting prior to this meeting this evening. Gentlemen's here from the organization if we have further questions. The sprite sign was not discovered for this project.
We're never going to recover that.
And I think that this is the first leg on the journey of funding and what I believe was stated, 18 to 24 months after the funding is received to begin and complete the construction?
Yes, that's correct. 18 to 24 months. And you didn't hear it from me, but just in the course of my travels, there is another very similar-looking sprite sign along Route 209 in Carving County, if anyone's interested.
Was it attached or was it laying on the side of the road?
Not the same, but it was attached there and it was hanging from the side of a building.
Can we get a sheriff to check the Baron Residence basement? Any other questions or call for the vote? Thank you.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner.
Yes.
Ms. Serinski.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo.
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you. Is there any other new business to discuss this evening?
Just a reminder of this.
Okay.
October 8th, 11-6. That's this weekend.
We can introduce that under committee reports.
Okay.
Are there any committee reports? Mr. Lot?
Yes, we had an economic development committee before the council meeting today. We discussed the two resolutions that we just approved on council. And I guess we also talked about the county festival we're having this Saturday at Hughmore Park, Louis Moore Park.
Louise Moore, not Hughmore.
Louis, I, Louise Moore. Anyway, but don't park there. You want to park at the Hectown, Lehigh Valley Site Oaks, I believe it's called. And they will shuttle you over there because there's not going to be a lot of parking over there. But it should be a nice week, a nice day out there. So there's going to be a lot more activity this year than prior years. It sounds like it's really growing. I don't know. What is this about the third year?
Did you mention the Beer Garden, too? Yeah, right?
I don't know. Is there a Beer Garden? There may be.
Tina's coming up.
Okay, Tina, I'm doing a terrible job explaining the festival, so please.
Please don't go to Hughmore Park. It is Louise Moore Park. Yes, you are correct. Yes, we are having a fruits of the vine and garden section this year to showcase some of our local vineyards and brew houses, colony meadery, even social still. So we're excited about that addition this year. And you are correct, please park at Lehigh Valley Hectown Oaks. And Lanta, we're getting some donation back from them, not charging us to transport our festival goers over to the park. That's nice of them.
Thank you. Anything else? Any other committee reports? Council liaison reports?
There's a farmland preservation meeting this past Tuesday. They're at 18,774.16 acres on 243 farms. I think you heard from Maria Benzoni yesterday at the budget hearing, which I did attend by phone. Just saying. Just wanted to make that clear. I heard that, too. But, and I think it was significant that she said the lists have been vacated every year and that 2023 might be the first year that it's not vacated. So I just want to say that's such a strong program. I'm always so much in favor of it, and I think Maria and Sean do a great job over there. They're only two people doing all this work, and it's amazing what they can accomplish. And I think every day that they should get a lot of kudos. So there you go.
Mr. Kuzic.
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on the budget hearing, which you did attend by phone yesterday. On the issue of Act 88, the discussion was over the fact that we were led to believe that we were eligible for $1.1 million, and they only seemed to believe that we could maybe hit $400,000 or so of that. Mr. Durdinger was kind enough to provide me with a list of election integrity grant program guidance and FAQs, and I'll hand it off to Linda, and she can provide it to everyone on council.
Thank you.
I did hear that conversation yesterday. I did hear that conversation yesterday, and it was about the money that we were granted for voting, that we can't use a significant portion of it because it has to be allocated for only specific things that, and we have to give it back in December. Is that inaccurate?
Charles, you want to address that?
I just want to make sure that I heard that accurately.
No, it's for the state budget period, so we will have it for this general election and the following primary election, but we will not have it for the next unless they reallocate money in the next state budget.
But they haven't been very good with giving any guidance on how to allocate those funds. Am I correct?
Mr. Kuzic has a copy of the nine areas for which we are allowed to use those funds. And it's very clear in the FAQs as to what we are not permitted, so.
So we think that we're only going to be able to use $400,000 of that sum?
The limitations of what we have. We have not seen what we can use, but of the $400,000, as I explained to Mr. Kuzic earlier tonight, of the $400,000, some of these are areas that we have to expand beyond where we were in the past because we are now, Act 88 requires us to have results by 12 o'clock at night. Act 88 does require new storage requirements, does require us to do a number of things that we hadn't been doing before. So we are now budgeting, we are using that money for things that hadn't been used before.
Yeah, so I'm concerned about that. So you have to have all the votes counted by midnight.
Northampton County has the good favor of doing that usually.
Yes.
We've not missed 12 o'clock except for the 2020 election. We are generally at that time, other than when you see that we're not 100% in sometimes. And we have a circumstance, somebody didn't bring back a memory stick, locked it in a facility that we canceled. The next morning, we have those results, but we will be able to report, as always, by 12 o'clock. We're usually one of the top three in the Commonwealth for getting our reports done.
Okay, I guess my concern is, is if you get votes, can the votes reported at midnight, if there's any votes that are counted after that, will they still count?
They will, of course.
You won't certify the election for several days.
Every election has a canvas. This is just the pre-canvas when we provide that. That's why they're the unofficial results. We are not required in any manner to provide the official results on election night. Just the count that's available.
Yeah, because I'm concerned that every vote should get counted. And do these funds pay for the yellow envelopes at all? No?
They do.
These do pay for the yellow envelopes that I'm very excited to get in the mail. These yellow envelopes designate the envelope that you're supposed to return your ballot in because that's what a naked ballot was when you didn't have, when you didn't have your ballot inside the envelope, the secrecy envelope. Now those are colored. Isn't that amazing? And that funding pays for it. Thank you so much.
Just as a circumstance, for everyone who's getting their ballots, there will still be some white envelopes going out, so not all of them, this election will be, will be yellow, so.
What?
Heard Hanover Township's getting white.
That's all right. My people know.
But I'll just finish by saying, I think that this is an issue that should be brought up at C cap. The fact that you're allocated $1.1 million and it's, you can't use half of that? I mean, that seems, just doesn't seem right, and I would hope that that's addressed sometime in the future. Because my fear is that what will happen is if we don't spend the money, we won't get it in the future, and they'll reduce the allocation, so.
November.
Oh, that's like right around the corner now, isn't it?
Right after the election.
It seems so far off.
In time to set priorities for next year.
But there are monthly Zoom calls.
There are.
That, you know, if I have the opportunity, if I'm on lunch, I'm going to jump on and I'm going to bring this issue up.
Anybody else?
No, I'm good.
Any liaisons? County clerk report.
Just a reminder, the Courts and Corrections Budget Hearing, excluding court services, will be held on Wednesday, October 12th at 4:30. And council members are reminded to bring their books.
Thank you. Mr. Solicitor, do you have a report?
Just to let the council know, I asked the president to be unavailable next week. I'm going to be out of town on vacation. I try to put my vacations not in the first and the third week, but there's a budget meeting, so I will not make it next Wednesday. If you have any questions, just get in touch with me.
To look at leaves.
Could I respond to that?
Yes, you can.
I just want to make a statement. I won't be here next Wednesday, but I'm not going with Chris. I just want to make that quite clear.
Thank you for clarifying that, Mr. Lot. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Thank you, Mr. Geo. Second. All in favor? Aye.